Students advance. That'll be Keenan Johnson and a young lady I've known her whole life, Amy Shoemaker, my little great niece. So, folks, if you'll stand with me and Reverend Cole, if you'll lead us into prayer.
Our most dear and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for your goodness and for your mercy. Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you've put out upon us. Father, we thank you for the freedom that we enjoy in this country. We're here tonight to participate in that freedom. So, Lord, we pray that you'll give us wisdom. Father, I thank you for each of these men and women who help us guide this community in the way that it should go, and I pray, Lord, that you'll give them special wisdom tonight in their deliberations. Father, we thank you once again for all that you've done for us. Father, we remember this family of Danny Farmer, Officer Danny Farmer, who passed away this week. Father, we pray that you have mercy upon that family, give them grace and strength, hold them close to your side. Now, Father, we pray that the meditations of our heart and the words of our mouth will be pleasing in thy sight, for we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Johnson and Ms. Shoemaker?
My pleasure to sit to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, kids. We appreciate you. And Reverend Cole, good to see you again. We've got a lot of stuff on our agenda tonight. It's, we've got zoning issues, some dog tethering, some things that I think we've got quite a few folks that'd like to speak on some of these issues tonight. So what I'm gonna do is, if it looks like that we're gonna go on awhile with a lot of folks talking, I'm gonna kinda give you a sort of a three minutes, kind of a four minutes, kind of a five minutes, to kinda remind you that we wanna make sure that everybody has a chance to speak who wants to, but we don't wanna just one person go on too awfully long. So I'm gonna kinda give you a three, a four, and a five-minute reminder of how long you've been up here. With that said, let's go ahead and get this meeting underway. Mr. Broughton, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, sir. The agenda is ready for action as presented.
All right. Thank you, sir. First up on our agenda are proclamations and recognitions, the first being recognition of the Bristol Health Challenge Team. And, Miss Broughton, you wanna tell us about that?
Well, I will. I'm gonna ask Belva Hale, if she would, our human resources director, if she'd stand up and help with the presentation. As you, this councilors know, the YMCA and the United Way are now sponsoring a health challenge for companies in town to compete for, and it's a wellness activity for a healthy workforce. And we're proud again that our group was at the top of the heap. And so, Belva, if you could introduce those members of the team who are in the audience, as well as present the winning awards to the city council?
We'd be happy to. We actually have three members of the team here tonight: Jack Spurgeon, Ruth Akers, Kristy Hensley, and they're being shy and not coming up here. But this was a great team this year. We actually took second place overall, second place in weight loss and second place in, help me out, folks, because I'm missing something, in exercise, I think, right, in our exercise total. Then the special award we received, which we thought was really excellent and knew you would want to know about it, is Bristol, City of Bristol, Virginia was also, had a team, and we scared them so bad they didn't show up for the competition, bless their hearts, and so we won that challenge as well. So, it was a great team. They exceeded last year's team as far as weight loss, and so I was very proud of them. So if anyone would like to say anything else, and I didn't realize Tim was here, I'm sorry. But anyway, it was a very nice event and very proud of this team. Thank you.
Folks, if any of you have ever seen that competition, I'm telling you, it's killer tough. And the teams, there are so many teams in that competition that to finish second place is, gosh, that's quite an honor. Anyway, moving on with our next recognition, Mr. Broughton, would you like to tell us about the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting?
I will. Tara, if you would please stand. Tara Music, our finance director. Tara has, through the good work of herself and her office, has received for the eighth consecutive year the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And that's an award that's presented by the Governmental Finance Officers Association of the U.S. And what that award recognizes is for the highest form of, the highest standards for the governmental accounting and financial reporting that we do, that she does, as a part of preparing our annual comprehensive financial report. There are very few cities nationwide, when you look at all of them, that are recipients of this award. As I mentioned, this is the eighth consecutive year that we've received it under Tara's leadership. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be appropriate for you to present the recognition plaque to Ms. Music.
I just wanna thank council for their support and for the financial leadership. And the process to write the report actually takes several weeks and is a month-long process to work with the auditors. So this is appreciated and hard-earned by staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. We've got a little something that's not on the agenda. Now, this little trophy here was awarded to the Parks and Rec Department under Terry Napier's guidance. If any of you were at the Christmas parade the other week, the coolest float I thought was the train from Stills Creek. They loaded on a float. It went up State Street, you know, under steam, smoking, and whistling that thing, and all lit up. It was just, it was really a remarkable float. And winner of first place overall for nonprofit organization, Terry Napier, got this trophy. And to all the folks in Parks and Rec and under Terry's guidance, thank you so much. It's quite a time.
Did they say anything?
Sure. Entered in the parade this year was a lot of fun. We had a lot of staff members, Tammy Loughlin, Stephen Berry, J.D. Lingerfeldt, and Rick Gregg, that put in a lot of time and effort to get the float operational. Dean from down at our transit garage, as usual, came to the rescue on the train. But we also, we also had a little special treat with the train. That was the second time that we've got Chippy, our new park mascot, out in the public. So a lot of kids got to see him for the first time. So again, thank you, council, for letting us have our train, and we'll continue to show it off to the public and come out and give it a ride.
Just a sideline there, our own Bristol, Tennessee, Essential Services won first overall in that parade. Tremendous float that they had, so very proud of them also. Moving on to the next thing on our agenda, we don't have any other presentations or public hearings, so we're up to appearance of citizens. So anyone in the audience tonight that does not speak to something on the agenda, now you'll have your opportunity to do that later, but you want to address the council on any other issue, if you'll come to the microphone over here, please introduce yourself and tell us where you live so we can get all of that into record. Anybody in the audience would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? That makes it pretty easy. We'll move right along then. Next up then, the ordinances and resolutions, first reading of new ordinances, beginning with ordinance 11-25. Mr. Broughton, if you'll tell us about that?
Let me read the title for ordinance number 11-25, which is "An Emergency Ordinance to Men Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances So as to Regulate Synthetic Drugs." For the past forty-five to sixty days, the police department and the city attorney's office have been working on evaluating the absence of overarching statute as it relates to the sale and possession and use of synthetic drugs. The problem with synthetic drugs, from the purpose, from the standpoint of law enforcement and for public health and safety, is these are untested drugs that are being sold, not for human consumption as packaged, but truly are drugs that are being sold for the purposes of emulating illegal recreational drugs, and they are untested. And because they're able to be sold legally in this state, for the most part, it gives the appearance that they're safe, as well as that they're publicly accept, that there's full public acceptance, because these are being sold in storefronts. The state has, in the past, regulated synthetic drugs, but the way that they have encapsul, encoded their statutory language is such where it's not flexible enough to change with the change of the chemical composition of these types of materials. So even though the state has previously gone on record finding this to be, being harmful to the public health and welfare, the industry is able to change the chemical composition at a moment's notice and keep staying legal, even though the intent is, has been for it not to be. We expect this year in Nashville, they once again will address it by the Tennessee General Assembly and probably address it statutorily in a way that we are, where not only is it the specific chemical composition of products that is illegal, but anything that acts in a similar way irrespective of the chemical composition. So what this ordinance does is to make it illegal to do all the things that I mentioned, that's to possess, use, produce it, sell it, or purchase it, synthetic drugs, if they're not otherwise outlawed by state law. A synthetic drug is one that basically mimics marijuana in terms of its hallucinatic effect, or cocaine. So what this will do is, and it's being brought forward as an emergency ordinance with the intent that you will be asked to approve it on second reading on December 20th, it will give us the ability to enforce the use and sale of, possession of synthetic drugs at the earliest opportunity, which would be on December 20th. And again, the reason for that is because of its harmful effect on public health and welfare and safety. Next slide, Sherry. The common names that are being sold, they're known as bath salts, incense, lazy cakes, K2, and others. In some cases, they're taking on the premise of a legal product, but these being sold in the ways that we're trying to regulate are not as innocent as an incense would seem to imply. These products can be used when they're under the direction of a physician, or a dentist, or other healthcare practitioner, or anybody that has a legal authority to use that, those products, in carrying forward their responsibilities. So it doesn't prevent the hospital or any others where there's illegally defined use for this. With your permission, we ask that you approve this evening on first reading, again with the intent that we will meet on December 20th and pass it on second reading and put it immediately into effect. If you have any questions about the legislation, Jack Hyder was drafted, of course, and then Blaine Wade, the police chief, is in the audience, if you have any questions about the enforcement, or what they're actually seeing on the street as it relates to these activities. I might add, I was coming back from down West State Street about thirty minutes ago and just happened to notice a whole lot of activity at one storefront where this material is being legally sold right now. And it was really quite alarming to see how much activity was happening there for a product that does have, is untested, and no doubt has some health effects that we need to get our arms around.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Does any member of council have any questions, clarification of staff? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance this evening who would like to address the city council on this particular issue? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Motion to move forward.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
Thank you, Joel. We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion by council?
This is a regional issue, and other government bodies are passing similar regulations. And from what I understand, the physical side effects are really severe, and our hospitals are seeing some really bad stuff. So it's really good to go ahead and do this. Also, Kingsport had a town hall meeting last night that was very well-attended and had emergency room physician, as well as some of the law enforcement, other folks, talking about it. So I hope that we'll follow through with something similar here to help educate our public, educate our parents, educate our young people that this is very serious stuff. So not, not, not the kind of abuse that should be chosen. There's not good. So great that we're moving ahead with it as quickly as we can. And look forward to the state moving on it, too, once they go back in the legislature.
The usage has been on the increase. Last year, there were three hundred cases, and through August 31st of this year, it's risen to five thousand cases. I attended a hospital board meeting last night and spoke to a physician who works in the emergency room. And the people that come in under the influence, of course, make themselves very known, but they're very loud. And also, the hospital's staff has suffered injury, because when they're trying to help these people, they're just in a state of mind that they can't realize that somebody's actually trying to help them. And so not only is it affecting the people that are ingesting it, but also their families and the medical staff that's trying to help these people to get better. So it is a grave danger to our society.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else wish to weigh in?
I would probably just note, if anybody does have questions or concerns, I'm sure our police department stands ready to answer questions, correct, Mr. Broughton? So if they have any questions about any family members who are bringing something home or visiting places, or whatever, that they want more information, I'm sure that our police department can be helpful.
Thank you, Marg. This is, certainly seems like a no-brainer on our part. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zollan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Yes. Next up, ordinance 11-26. Mr. Broughton, if you'll tell us about that?
Ordinance number 11-26 is an ordinance to mend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee, by designating certain properties as RE, Established Residential Neighborhood. And this is a rezoning we're commonly calling, and it's being known as the Fairmount North Rezone. The city council is well aware of the planning effort that took place in the Fairmount neighborhood this past year, which involved numerous community meetings, land use study, building condition survey, a number of activities that were undertaken that resulted in the drafting and completion of the Fairmount Neighborhood Plan. You'll remember this, you all had accepted this back in the summer. And as a part of that planning document, with the assistance and support of the residents of the Fairmount neighborhood, there were a number of objectives that were identified that would enhance, maintain, protect, and enhance the neighborhood going forward in time. Several of those related, were related to land use and zoning. And so this is the first of two ordinances, rezoning ordinances, specifically as a result of the planning process for the Fairmount neighborhood, with one additional rezoning ordinance to follow in time, in following time. This first one is known, as I said, as the Fairmount North Neighborhood. And what it does is it changes a large section of the Fairmount neighborhood, and I'll bring a map up in just a second, from R3, which is a multifamily residential district, to the RE, Established Residential District. It's a big rezoning. It involves five, six hundred parcels, spread over a hundred and seventy-two acres. Next slide, Sherry. There you go. That is a zoning map that depicts the area subject to this rezoning. Little hard to read, I know, but if you'll look at the, in the orange color, the thick black border line, that area, what's within that border is the area that is subject to this rezoning from, again, from R3, which allows apartments to be placed in that area, to RE, which restricts the use to single-family dwellings and duplex units upon passage in the future. Next slide, Sherry. As I mentioned, well, I guess I didn't mention this, this is a new district that the city council established about two years ago, when we recognized the need in some of our older residential neighborhoods that started out as single-family dwellings only, and over the course of time morphed, migrated into homes that were split up into a number of apartment units. And the result, and the reason because of that was because of zoning practices back in the 50s and 60s, 40s, whenever the zoning first came into play in Bristol, to put into effect a zoning scheme that seemed to make sense, given the size of the lots. And over the course of time, we've come to realize that putting that many dwelling units in such a small space that wasn't designed for that, and then with the advent of vehicles and everything else that comes with that, that it wasn't working in today's world. And so the RE district was established, it was first implemented successfully about a year ago in the Windsor-Anderson Broad area, the Weeden-Seed area, was the first time we've implemented that on a large scale, and this is the second use of that. And the purpose of the zoning is to allow for infill in these areas with new residential structures that'll be consistent and harmonious with what's there. We're trying to keep those neighborhoods intact, and over time, and time means a long time, because it took fifty or sixty years for the neighborhoods to develop to what they are, it'll take a long time for them, we expect, to return primarily to what they were intended when they started. So the difference between the current R3 zoning, which that area is currently zoned, and the RE, which is recommended to you to move to, is that it doesn't allow apartment dwellings. That's really the single difference between the two. Next slide, Sherry. Now, it's been a little difficult, probably, if you've read the materials that's gone to the Planning Commission, and then what's come to you on top of that from the staff, I'm sure you're thoroughly confused about what is being proposed. And that's because this thing, as it's received more input and evaluation, we've recognized it was a little more complicated than we thought when we went into it. And so I'm gonna focus a few slides here on this little particular section and help you understand where it is, because the rest of it hasn't been a party to the conversation of, should it stay R3 with, allow for these multifamily apartment units, or should it move to the RE? This little blue section is what was originally presented to the Planning Commission in the original staff recommendation. And what that area is, is, that includes Fairmount School, that's the big, there you go, thank you for pointing it out, on the wall on the right side of the audience, that's where Fairmount School is located. And then you can see it incorporates the rest of the block and part of the block to the north. That area was originally recommended by the staff to the Planning Commission to don't, to not change, leave it as the existing R3, because most of that area was constructed in the recent past, twenty, thirty years ago, maybe, recent past, with units specifically to be attached, dwelling units, five single-family homes attached, for example. And so that area was purposely designed for those types of structures, made no sense in the eyes of the staff to go and change that where that became a non-conforming use. Next slide, Sherry. The Planning Commission looked at the staff recommendation and accepted part of the recommendation. What they accepted was leaving the school, R3, and the homes there that round out that block behind Fairmount School, but the piece to the north there, which included those attached dwelling units on a single lot, they struck from the recommendation. And so that's what the Planning Commission recommended to you. And the ordinance as written is that scheme, to leave that center part of this rezoning in that configuration, where only the school in that block is left at the R3 zoning. Next slide, Sherry. What the staff has recommended to you following, this is slide three again, so bear with me. The first slide was what we recommend the Planning Commission, the second slide is what the Planning Commission felt made sense to them, and is what this ordinance is written to do. Since all that took place, we've, as a staff, have been asked to look more carefully at what happens to those structures if they're rezoned from that R3 multifamily used to the RE. And what happens is something probably you may not want to happen, and that is if those structures were to be damaged, if those rental units in that five-plex, for example, was to be damaged by fire, if more than forty percent of the value went away, they couldn't go back and rebuild what was there. And given the fact, again, and I'm not so sure I wasn't there, but I suspect we probably didn't do a good enough job talking through that element with the Planning Commission when they weighed in as to what they thought should remain R3. But as a result of that further inspection of the consequences of the full rezoning, what we are recommending to you tonight is to include in the part that isn't rezoned, the yellow, which is what the Planning Commission felt should be, not changed, and we agree, but also the section there that's highlighted in blue, because that area contains these, as I said, these multifamily, they're either an apartment building or a series of attached multi, single-family dwellings that would be subject to adverse actions should there be a damage for those that are used as rental properties. So that's what we would ask that you do tonight with an amendment, but I'm gonna take you to one more slide and thoroughly confuse everybody. And this next slide isn't even colored, because what we, what we're gonna ask you to do tonight is approve the rezoning in its current form, as presented, without any amendment. And what we are going to do is, I'm gonna ask Sherry to take the rezoning back to the Planning Commission at their December work, at their December meeting, and look at not only the rezoning recommendation that we have adjusted as a staff, but also to the expansion in those areas where the stars are, because you have the same situation in those areas where there are apartment buildings or single-family attached units that really, truly need to be treated in the same way. And so what Sherry will be doing is taking this back as a work item on the Planning Commission's December meeting, to see if they are comfortable with the original recommendation or want to moderate it, modify it. And I plan to bring this up at our December work session as well, following the Planning Commission's action in December. And then we can go walk through it one more time, and this center part is where we seem to be having the most difficulty, and find, see what makes the most sense at that point, after a further vetting by the Planning Commission, share it with you, get you guys in a place that you're comfortable, and then bring back second reading with the necessary amended amendment to put it where it needs to be. So with that, I'm sorry it took so long to walk through it, but we're, we're close to having a good zoning amendment. We know we've got a center section here that needs a little more study, and we'd really like the Planning Commission to weigh in one more time, once we can vet that a little bit more carefully. Do I have one more slide on this, Sherry, or is that it? Okay. So with that, with that explanation, I would, I would ask, if you're comfortable with it at this time, to approve first reading, which of course- at this time, to approve first reading, which of course approves nothing, it just moves it ahead so that at second reading, you can pass a rezoning ordinance, if you're comfortable and ready at that point, with the understanding you'll look at it again at the December.
Which version at the first reading?
I mean, just, just pass what's on the, just pass what's there, because we're gonna, no doubt, amend something at second reading.
And your amendment would include the very last slide, is that correct?
It, you know, you can, you could amend it either way, but I think it's gonna come back and be amended again. So, it's probably just clean, it's just, because you're not passing anything tonight, you're just moving it ahead.
Correct.
So, I, we've got an ordinance that's ready to move ahead, just do that, and then, with the expectation, I think that at the January meeting, it'll be in an amended form, consistent with the planning commission's additional review and your further review at work session.
Did anyone speak with the owner of the Barker Mansion?
I, I'll have to ask Sherri if she can answer that.
Is Myers' closing agreement agreed?
With the R three zoning?
RE.
RE zoning?
R three or RE?
R three, okay.
Did anyone else on council need additional clarification from staff? I think we know what we're doing here. If, if not, then, is there anyone in attendance wish to speak on this particular issue? I, I think probably, our city manager's probably answered some of your concerns in what he has said. But if you do wish to speak on this issue, now's the time to do so. If you'll come to the microphone and tell us who you are.
Later, the item, to ask, make an inquiry, I believe the recommendation is to take the matter back before the planning commission, with the idea that the section that's not, that's darkened, but not yellow, could be, where you resume, or?
Looked at again.
Would remain R three, except for the Barker mansion.
Well, I, the, the safer thing to say is, we, there, this is, has a little bit of a moving target, and so, I don't want you to leave this room thinking that the recommendation of the staff, or what the planning commission is gonna light down on as its recommendation of the council, is going to include or exclude that. We just know that there needs to be further conversation about that.
Terry, if you'll put into record that Myers Massengill Senior of Greystone has asked, has asked a question, Mr. Massengill.
As I understand it, what's, what's we're going to do is bring it back before the planning commission, the recommendation, and come back and do what, and then.
Right. But, this could be a good time, if you want to make your wishes known, Myers, that could be a good thing, but you oughta go to the microphone, just so that, and the same thing for Al, if you wanted to be sure you clarify what your position is, then, then, when we take it back to planning commission, we know that.
While you're walking up to the microphone, I'll just go ahead and, and weigh in just very briefly. I, I had some calls, I had some concerns, I spoke to our city manager, he mentioned that other council members are doing the same thing, asking him questions, concerns, phone calls, and, and again, this, this looked pretty obvious to all of us, we need to look at this again.
We're not done.
We're not finished with this. So, so, Mr. Massengill, please go ahead.
All right. Myers Massengill, and I do live in the Greystone section. The, the, excuse me, the block that, that is involved, that I'm here about tonight, is the area of Spruce, Carolina Avenue, Cypress, and Kentucky Avenue, and that is the darkened section where Mr. Brown is, is indicating. All, all but the Barker Mansion are multifamily apartments or condominiums. In fact, according to Ms. Brown, our Community Development Department Director, only seven out of the forty-nine residences are owner-occupied, excluding the Barker Mansion. Our city planners had recommended to the planning commission that this block remain R three, because other than the Barker Mansion, every dwelling within that block is a multifamily unit. Under RE zoning, if any of these units were damaged by more than forty percent due to fire or tornado, then it could only be reconstructed by an owner occupier of the unit. And, as I pointed out, only seven of the units, of the forty-nine units are owner-occupied, and it just puts a tremendous burden, in fact, the, in, in the case of the property owned by my family, it, it would not be realistic for them to sell their homes and move into a townhouse within that block. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Does there anyone else wish to address council on this issue?
Apparently, someone spoke up for us earlier about the Barker Mansion. Myers and I have discussed this at length. I have no problem with this keeping, I guess it amounts to spot zoning, is what we termed it, keeping the Barker Mansion as RE, which I think is the direction this is going, and I agree with that, and I don't wanna convert it back to apartments, so, that's where we stand.
Can I get clarification? Did you say you do not, do not want it converted back?
Oh, I do not, I have no intention, I hope it never is converted back to apartments, it was too hard to reconvert it.
I think, I believe what, what he is saying is that he is in favor of the RE zoning change.
Yes, correct. For that particular plot.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Anyone else wish to address council on this issue?
My name is Phil Ellis, I live on Georgia Avenue, and I guess I have a question in that the information we've been given and sent out, you guys have a lot of different scenarios you're presenting, and, and maybe it's my ignorance on the procedural, but as we go and pass first reading, it seems like we should have more solid information before you take a vote, to go through the process of, was it three, three readings? So, it just seems kind of premature before you take it back and do your final study to, to advance this step.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Anyone else? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council? Do we have a motion?
I think we need to have a motion with the condos being zoned R three, the Barker Mansion being zoned RE, and look at the two areas that were pointed out earlier.
Is that, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Mr. Brown, is it possible to?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No.
Is it possible to look at the staff's recommendation at the work session with all the changes that are happening before we vote on this order?
I mean, tonight?
Yes, sir.
Certainly.
We can motion to defer.
But let me, let me do, before I leave that question, let me, let me go back, reverse the slide, Sherri, to, uh, let's, one more. Okay, go back, there, there you go, next, there you go. That's, to the comment that Michelle, you made, that would be the area that, in my memo, recommended that you rezone tonight, when we drafted the memos third, last week. And so, if you wanted to move in the direction Michelle said, then the action would be to amend the ordinance to reflect those areas that are in the color, to remain R three. And, and that would move this ahead with part of the revised recommendation in place, it will be consistent, I think, with what you were trying to do, Michelle. Or, if you guys just wanna put it off another month and pick up first reading again, that doesn't hurt anything either, it's up to you.
I, I wish to make a motion to defer, but we gotta deal with Michelle's motion first.
It dies, we're live for the second.
True. Michelle, you can either withdraw your motion, or if no one seconds it, it'll die for lack of motion, and, or second, and then, we'll go with Mr. Zane.
Since we know this is what we want for these areas, I will go ahead and stay with the motion.
Okay. Ms. Brown, could you show us the very last, thank you, okay, where the gold stars are, are not within the first, or the second drawing that you are motioning? This area also includes the apartment building and the school, the old schoolhouse that are apartment buildings as well, that is gonna keep them into the R three.
We can look at that separately.
We have a motion, do we have a second for Michelle's motion? Dies for lack of motion. Ben, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to defer this to the next council meeting, so the planning commission have time to revise and make a adequate proposal for the next voting.
I'll second him.
All right. Ben, you, we've got a motion, and y'all decide who gets the second there. Michelle, you've got the second.
This also gives opportunity to make sure that everything's clear to everybody, so, with presenting all the different maps, etc.
I wanna thank Mr. Brown and Ms. Brown for dedicating your time to me last week and this week to go over this, I was overwhelmingly confused, but you made it very clear, I appreciate that, and thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right. We do have a motion and a second, we've had some discussion, and we've beat it, kind of beat around this thing. Anyone else wish to weigh in on this particular issue?
I'll just say, this is good to move forward, I don't think there's a huge rush to do so, so, but I think it's very positive, and if we can do a little clearer presentation, etc., then we'll be in better shape, and everybody can have a chance to understand completely.
You know, sometimes it's really necessary for us to go ahead and get it done, on this particular one, a month's not gonna make a lot of difference, so, Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Firehoff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on then. Ordinance eleven dash twenty-seven, Mr. Brown, would you like to tell us about Fairmount South?
I'm afraid to, but I don't know. Ordinance number eleven twenty-seven is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee, by designating certain properties as B three general business district, and this is what we're calling Fairmount South rezoning. This is the second of two rezoning actions tonight that we have ready for your consideration. I, again, I apologize for that last one, we were, this one, I hope, will be a little bit clearer and straightforward for you to understand, and for us to have vetted it properly on a staff level. This is a, a second rezoning, and what it'll do is rezon property, again, in Fairmount neighborhood, from M one, which is our light industrial district, to B three, which is the city's general business district. This is a smaller rezoning, it involves a total of thirteen acres, in actually two separate areas, and we'll bring that map up here next, and it, again, this is consistent with, with the feedback that was received as a part of the Fairmount planning process. Sherri, if you'll go to this next slide. Here is a, here's the map of the area in question, the area's in question, the, let's try to orient you a little bit first, the areas first subject to rezoning are in purple, and we're calling them Track One, which is there towards the bottom left, and Track Two, which is there towards the top right, and, again, to orient yourself, you can see the Food City Center is right there on Virginia Avenue, with Virginia Avenue four twenty-one running to the top to the north, and to the bottom of the page to the south. So, that, that is the location of, of the area of these two similar rezonings, but in slightly different locations. The, next slide, Sherri. There we go. The B three district, again, it's currently M one, and the recommendation is to take it from a light industrial to a, to a general business district. General business district is what you typically see almost exclusively, except, uh, in, in a few cases, and, but it's our general business, business district, where most business activities are allowed. The M one district, which, again, is being recommended to move away from, allows also some mixed business uses within the M one, but it also allows for light industrial uses. And, and the genesis for the rezoning is try to migrate more of the interior areas of the Fairmount neighborhood, away from the historical industrial manufacturing that took place, and, and reintroduce into those areas more general business uses. Uh, you know, we just had a long conversation, we touched on nonconformity, which occurs with, can occur with rezonings, and, and the same thing will apply with a rezoning to the B three district, but maybe in a little different way. All of the businesses that were located within those two areas will be conforming. The use that they, the use that they are in the B three district is a lawfully conforming use, so, nothing happens to them whatsoever, it, I mean, it's just like, it's always been B three. The only business in that area that will become a nonconforming use is the Necessary Oil property, which isn't, can't migrate because of what it does into a general business use, so that will become a nonconforming use. Now, I think you all know that the owner of the property is comfortable with the rezoning of his property, to B three, but Tennessee code protects businesses statewide in ways that doesn't allow a city to take a business out of business by rezoning, and so, that business, Necessary Oil, under Tennessee code, will be able to remain in business for as long as they choose, the property can be sold, it can be expanded, I mean, it's, things can continue there, just like there was no rezoning, because of the protections that Tennessee legislature has given businesses, to protect them going forward in time.
So, Mr. Brown, if the property is sold, they can continue to operate under M one?
It'll, it can, it'll, no, it'll be a B three, if the zoning is approved, it'll become a B three zone, but the business can be sold and continue to operate as if the zoning change never occurred.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's see, do I have another slide, Sherri? I think I must have one, there you go. This, I didn't show this slide at the last, when we talked about the Fairmount, no, north, because the area is so large, but the same slide could have been used only in a little different way. This is our future land use map. Future land use map is a document the city council adopted five years ago now, and it identifies, going forward in time, how do we see this town developing and changing? If we had the right absolutely, absolute ability to do that, how would we see it changing? And the area that's circled there are the two areas that were on, in purple on the earlier drawing, the area subject to rezoning, and as you can see from that land use planning work of five years ago, this area was identified to migrate from manufacturing to commercial, the red being the commercial business zoning in the land use plan. So, the planning commission looked at this, as they always do on all rezoning matters, and at their November meeting, recommended the rezoning of Fairmount South as it is presented to you, noting its consistency or compliance, its fundamental tie-in with the future land use map, and the policies that- the future land use map, and the policies that accompany the map. With that, we'll be happy to answer questions you might have.
Any clarification needed from Mr. Broden or staff? Hearing none. Is there anyone in attendance this evening who would wish to address the city council on this particular zoning? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to move forward.
Thank you, Ben. That'll be our, thank you, Ben, the motion, and Joel, the second. Thank you. Is there additional discussion by council?
I have a question. My concern is that we have lost so much manufacturing overseas and also from this area. To me, it would be a shame to rezone out manufacturing. There is, however, an industrial park nearby, and is that, is there land available for manufacturing to come to that industrial site?
We have, we have numerous areas that are zoned manufacturing in the city. We have three industrial parks in the city limits, the old municipal industrial park on Weaver Pike, and there is a small amount of land there that's available for development or for vertical construction, and of course, any building that's existing, and there are vacant buildings there, too, that somebody could move into and operate out of. We have that one. Of course, we have the new partnership Park Two, also on Weaver Pike.
But any question specifically would be the one that is located near there.
What's located, the guys close to that is?
Blackley Road area, there's some industrial area there.
Right. Well, it's right over, it's the Weaver Pike, it's on the other side.
And is that zoned in?
As I said, we have a number of areas that have industrial zoning and industrial facilities operating, of course, within those areas. The Blackley Road area, the parks I was describing, and of course, others.
Any other discussion, comments from council?
I think this, this helps with the development of the Fairmount area, and when we, we had lots of discussions when we did, had our land use plan with public input, et cetera, that ideally, this area does need to be a mixture of commercial and residential, and this helps to move it long-term in that direction, so. Looks good.
All right. Thank you. You know, as our city has grown and spread out, when, when our city was this big, industry was right here. As our city's grown and spread out, we've moved industry out to the edges of the community so that you don't have manufacturing right next door to residential sites. And this is more appropriate, and I think those individuals that, spoken at least one in that area, that is in the process of trying to, to move that industry out. So I think, I think this is appropriate. Terry, I think we're, we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Yes. Next up, ordinance 11-28. Mr. Broden?
Ordinance number 11-28 is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating, designating certain properties as B3 general business district. The property subject to this rezoning has a street address of 2037 and 2043 Highway 421. All right. This is, I guess, the third rezoning on tonight's agenda. This is a small rezoning located on, on 421. We'll bring that map in just a second. It'll rezone a four-acre parcel from R1A, which is a single-family residential district, to B3, again, our general business district. Sherry, maybe you can bring that up. There you go. The property is owned by Century Link. It's that cross-hatch, cross-hatch section with the R1A, four-acre parcel. 421 is the, of course, it fronts on 421. At the bottom of the page, again, orientation here is where 394 ties into 421 at the southern edge of the city limits. Again, it's owned by Century Link. They currently operate, it's an equipment, it's a building that houses equipment for their telephone operations. They, as I understand it, actually are, they have more property there than they have need, and I believe their plan is to subdivide the property in the future and find a business use in the future. The pink, I guess that's pink salmon, it's a very light color. That is all B3, which is what is, again, our general business district. It's the right-of-way. It's interesting. And so the R1A, which is a residential district, and that property is not suited really for residential purposes, the B3 will tie that four acres into the rest of the road right-of-way in that area, which has been zoned B3. We surmise in the past, the thought was that area would develop as, as business, and that's was a starting point to move back off into the private property that a company did. The only other landmark that we put on the map there was across the street is the RV sales, maybe to help orient you a little bit on that as well. Next slide, Sherry. The B3, we've talked about this already, our general business activity, that's the prominent business zoning that we have. Again, the R1A district is only intended for single-family dwellings, which doesn't seem to make sense at that location. The, the land use plan, bring it forward, Sherry, and then we're going to go back. The land use plan, however, when we went through that process five years ago, didn't identify changing that site from single-family residential use. And so the future land use map indicates that that area remained single-family residential, but as the land use map goes, so does the policies that accompany the land use map that were also adopted by city council. So you look to the policies to see if there's something that's more supportive or can support a rezoning for an area that probably wasn't looked at very carefully when that land use map was developed five years ago because of its location and size. But there is a policy in the land use, policy document that talks about supporting land use changes that encourage the use and expansion of existing commercial areas, and we see that, and the planning commission did as well, in their recommendation to you to rezone to B3. They found that policy supported the rezoning from that single-family residential district to a business district. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the rezoning to B3 of that four-acre parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Is there anyone in council needs additional clarification from staff? There's no questions from council? Is there anyone in attendance this evening who wish to address the council on this particular matter, this particular rezoning? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Margaret, and Ben, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to ordinance 11-29. Mr. Broden?
Ordinance number 11-29 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances relating to buildings and building regulations. The city, as have most cities in the state of Tennessee, have adopted the ICC family of building codes. That's an international, ICC stands for the International Code Council. That has promulgated a nationwide set of codes, building codes, that most, pretty much all jurisdictions, most jurisdictions have adopted and used to guide the construction, new construction activities within their community. We have, of course, adopted that as well. And they're, they're updated from time to time. The current code version that we have in place in Bristol is the 2006 code version for the international codes. And then there's, the electrical code is a little different. It stands on its own. There's also the national electric code that is independent of that international code family. And we have the, the current version of the electrical code is the 2005 version. So right now, we're using code versions that have been updated over the past five and six years. So what this action will do tonight will adopt the latest versions of the codes, so we'll be adopting the full 2012 family of codes and the 2011 national electrical code, each of which is the most current version of the codes that are out there to guide development in our community. The, next slide, Sherry. The, there's actually 11 separate code, I'm sorry, I guess there isn't. There's actually 11 separate codes, and they're listed on my memo that are, that are being adopted with various appendices that go with them. So it's not just, when you say the building code, that's a generic term, but there are a number of independent codes within that generic building code, such as the plumbing code and a property mechanical code and fire code, energy conservation code. You have a number of codes, all of which are pretty thick documents, but the, but the beauty about adopting these uniform codes is that design professionals and building contractors who do a lot of work are familiar with them because they do, they use the same codes elsewhere. And so they're not looking at a Bristol's only code and trying to figure it out for purposes of building. They're building to a national code that they understand and that has been designed and developed by a group of contractors and design professionals and business owners. It's a very vetted process where the group comes together and agrees on what's reasonable standards for construction are adopted, and then they're followed pretty much uniformly. It's also important that we update our codes because the state, because we have asked and the state has granted Bristol the right to do its own building permitting and inspection process. A lot of cities don't have that. The cities that don't have it rely on the state, and you have a tremendous slope, tremendously slow process if the city itself isn't handling the permitting and inspection process. And so by us having all of that happening here locally, we're able to, to be more responsive in terms of the review and approval and process leading to the issuing of certificate of occupancies. So with this, we would ask that you would approve this, and the one thing that we're doing that's a little unusual is the, upon passage at second reading, which we believe will happen at the January meeting, the, we will allow for basically a few, a full year's time for anybody to design and construct under the old code or the new code. So there'll be a full year of overlap where, because there are probably some projects in some state of being where they built, they're working under the old code set. And so to facilitate and allow for that situation, we'll, for the next year following passage, we'll accept and inspect to either code that they bring it to us for. So it'll, it'll help anything that's underway, and for the first year, anybody can choose whichever code that they prefer. They prefer to bring the plans to, to be compliant with. We think that's a good way to address that, just to minimize any disruption to some project that's underway. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, recommend or passage this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Any clarification needed by council? Hearing none. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to address the city council on this particular matter? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Margaret, thank you, and Ben, thank you for the second. We've got a motion and a second. Additional discussion by council? I'm going to guess, I'm the only one up here who actually has to know a little bit of that stuff, and it's massive. Residential home inspector is my real job, and I can't even know all that stuff, so good luck, Jack. We have a motion, second. If there's no other discussion, Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Moving on to our last ordinance in this section, an ordinance 11-30. Mr. Broden?
Ordinance number 11-30 is an ordinance to amend Section 62165 of the Code of Ordinances relating to temporary sidewalk café permits for special events. The, several years ago, the city council, you'll recall, you adopted sidewalk café regulations that allows food and beverage establishments to use the sidewalks as café areas, provided that certain thresholds are satisfied, the sidewalk is kept wide enough open where pedestrians can pass and so forth. Well, that was passed several years ago, and it applies in the downtown area, and that was a part of the efforts the city has made to enhance the desirability of the downtown as a place to, to visit and recreate. In this past year, you, and as a part of that café regulations, you also set up temporary café permit, permits that it could also be acquired, which allowed for those sidewalk cafes to be expanded out further during times when we had special events, and the best example would be Rhythm and Roots, when we closed all the streets, and, and the street, in essence, becomes a sidewalk. And so the sidewalk area then can be expanded temporarily during festival to enlarge the seating area where the food and beverage activities can occur. So all of that happened several years ago. Well, in this past year, what, what you have approved was to allow community theaters to get beer permits, and that was specifically to a request that you received, which was asked and made to enhance the viability, the financial viability of the theater downtown. They, that theater, and we're talking about the Paramount, they also have interest in having café, a sidewalk café during events when we close streets off, like Rhythm and Roots, but currently, they're not eligible to receive one because they aren't a food and beverage establishment, they're a community theater. So what this does simply is amends our sidewalk café regulations to allow a community theater to also be granted a sidewalk café, temporary sidewalk café permit. And so what that means, in essence, is only during the times of the year when we have downtown closed off and we have temporary café permits being issued to food and beverage establishments, the theater will also be eligible to receive one as well, and that, and then they'll be able to operate on, with the temporary café regulations during the period of time of the festival, so. And that was also a request to facilitate the financial viability of that, of the community theater and help keep them in sound financial footing so they can be here another 90, 75 years. It's pretty simple, I think, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Is there any clarification needed by council? Hearing none. Is there anyone in attendance wish to speak to council on this, this particular ordinance? Anyone wish to weigh in on this particular matter? Seeing none, what's the, uh?
Somebody?
There you go. Motion, second. Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Michelle. English is my first language, it's, believe it or not. We have a motion and a second. Additional discussion by, by council? I'll weigh in on this one. You know, the, we've got a wonderful opportunity during a race night, Rhythm and Roots, Rhythm and Roots has, has over the past good many years now become Christmas for our downtown restaurants. restaurants in particular. It's, they do more business during that particular time than any other time of the year. It's, it's their number one weekend. It's their money weekend. And the Paramount Theater Bristol, other nonprofits downtown, you know, would, would hope to be able to also participate in that and, and help themselves financially during Rhythm &amp; Roots. We got 50,000 people that we've got to feed and, and take care of during the festival. Nonprofit organizations like the Civitan Club, that, for many years, has been their largest fundraiser throughout the year. So, you know, any opportunity that we can have, I think, to, to help our nonprofits like the Paramount or Theater Bristol, and help them participate in a way that helps ensure their viability, we need to try to do so. Teri, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilwoman Zandi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor State.
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker.
Yes.
Moving on, then, to adoption of ordinance's second reading. The first up is ordinance 11-23.
Ordinance number 11-23 is an ordinance to amend section 10-46 of the Code of Ordinances relating to tethering of dogs. This matter is, it seems to me like we reviewed this in work session a month or so ago, as well as had first reading at our last meeting. The proposed tethering change from our current regulations is outlined in a pretty simple sentence on the board that's on the screen, and that's to make it unlawful for any person to tether a dog on any day before sunrise or sunset. The council, again, will recall that it was a few years ago when tethering regulations were established in this city for the first time. Tethering regulations that really are somewhat still not widely adopted in other jurisdictions in our state and nationally. But the city council stepped forward a few years ago and found a reason to adopt tethering regulations that are on the next slide. Sharon? And the tethering regulations that were adopted were basically to establish the weight of the tether, which was relational to the weight of the dog. It allow, it also provided that there be movement of that dog of sufficient amount for the welfare of that animal. It included that there be a swivel device, which was designed to provide full movement and prevent a problem occurring because of the failure of that, of a fixed device on a collar for not moving. Required that there be a non-choke collar or harness, and that the dog, in essence, have free access to it for water shade, dry ground, and shelter. So, that was what was adopted several years ago. The council has been recently asked to look at expanding the tethering regulations, and the addition does, as I described on the first page, first slide, Sharon, take it back, was to extend that where it will not be lawful to tether an animal, basically during the dark hours, from sunset to sunrise. Just in closing, and then I'm sure we'll have some conversation on this, the, we, the council will recall, you had a original request and an interest to ban tethering completely in our city. That action is one that's very limited in terms of legislation that's been adopted nationwide. No, but no city in Tennessee has adopted, and no tethering ordinance, to our knowledge. There are only, I think, I believe there's somewhere on the order of about 80 nationwide that comes to mind that have banned that. So, this was seen, based on the conversation you've had, as a, another step forward where outright banning wasn't in the cards for our community today, but it was one more step to move us along a path with prevention of nighttime banning. We are comfortable, as I mentioned at the work session and at first reading, we are comfortable with the amended language in terms of the enforceability of the rules. I'm not talking about acceptability, but in terms of just enforceability, making it something that we can do in a way that's effective with our existing staffing, it works. Any amendment to change it as it's presented, I can't imagine how it could be where it wouldn't create an enforceability problem. So, I ask you, and we'll, of course, be happy to talk through it to the full extent you need to, we ask that either you pass it in the form it's presented, or if you're not able to get there today, leave it alone and just make no changes from the existing regulations that we already have, and provide a fair level of protection to the animal in ways that I know you all want to do. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any clarification needed from staff? Hearing none. Is there anyone in attendance this evening who would like to address the city council on this particular issue? Please come forward to the microphone and state your name, and...
Good evening. My name is Jim Jones. I live at 921 Edgemont Avenue. I've always wanted to say this, but I do not have a dog in this fight. However, my mother does. What I'm concerned about, about, Chain Free Bristol has generously offered to supply fences. This is an ad hoc group who's set up here specifically for their purpose of achieving their agenda. I wonder how long they're going to continue providing these services once their objective is met and this group disappears. Cruelty, there is already an ordinance, as already explained. There's already an ordinance regarding the size of the tether and, and other application. It makes no difference if it is night or day. It is okay in the daylight, it is okay at night. Chain Free Bristol's offered to provide fences. I don't know how many of it have done so far, but it's been very slow, I understand. Some neighborhood covenants prevent fences. Some require wooden privacy fences if there's going to be a fence. Will Chain Free Bristol provide additional funds in order to comply? Face it, some people just can't afford a fence. Question, will the city give a grace period for violators until every request for free fence is honored by Chain Free Bristol? Please tell me, which is more humane, a 25-foot dog run or an airline-style kennel with three square foot of floor space on the back porch? After all, that would meet the letter of the law. Noise, it has been stated by members of the council that one intent is to minimize nighttime barking. I, for one, would like an explanation how a fence muffles a dog's barking. Besides, there are already laws in place against animal cruelty as well as animal noise. I would suggest you enforce your existing laws instead of adding new laws. Crime, with criminals knowing there are no dogs outside, it appears they will have license to plunder in people's backyards at night. I would think that the crime rate would go up. Now, my mother is an 84-year-old widow who lives alone. Her dog in the backyard gives her a sense of security, knowing it will bark if someone is walking back there. It has been said a better Bristol by having such laws will attract businesses by being a more civilized society. I doubt this greatly. When corporate CEOs are looking for a place to relocate, one thing they look for is less government regulation and intrusion, and not more. The pound, I'm curious as to how many people's dogs will wind up at the pound because they cannot comply with the ordinance. And we all know what happens to dogs in the pound. I can't think of anything more cruel than having abandoned animals put to death. Enforcement, well enforcement, who will enforce this ordinance? The police? Animal Control? As I understand it, Animal Control has two officers. Are you going to hire more staff to police this issue? Is that what you mean by job creation? Were our valued police officers going to be busy on doggy duty instead of real crime? Lastly, I expect as much from our liberal politicians that desire social control, but our conservative candidates who are elected to manage the city's business and not the private lives of citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone else wish to weigh in on this particular issue?
My name is Liza Conway. I live at 162 Fairfield Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. I have been working with council since January 8th of 2008 on our dog ordinances. I have shown you pictures of sad chained backyard dogs. I have shown you pictures of a dog that Animal Control found frozen to death. I have given you verbiage from other communities that have successfully implemented regulations, restrictions, rather, on dog tethering. I have mailed you newsletters showing you the successes from Chain Free Bristol. Now, I am asking you to please pass the proposed dog chaining ordinance. I do not like an abundance of laws or ordinances that infringe on personal freedoms. However, there are times when we must implement them for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. We currently have on the books that it is a misdemeanor, section 50-25, that once notified by certified mail, that 15 days after receiving certified mail, you will be charged with a misdemeanor if you fail to return an overdue library book, or if lost, pay, if you fail to pay to replace them. We also have section 50-24, anti-noise. A person may not yell, shout, hoot, whistle, or sing on the public streets between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., so as not to disturb the quiet, comfort, or repose of any person in a hospital, dwelling, hotel, or other type of residence, or any person in the vicinity. These ordinances may also be considered an intrusion of the government into our, into private citizens' lives. I believe that eliminating animal abuse and neglect is a far greater concern than someone whistling too loudly at midnight or failing to return an overdue library book. Regulating dog ownership is not new. Shots are required and other rules which ensure the safety of the citizens as well as the dog. We have food, water, shelter rules solely for the humane treatment of the animal. This anti-tethering ordinance would act as another humane regulation to further ensure the safety of the citizens, to ensure the safety of the Bristol citizens and help the dog and its environment. It's the right thing to do. Why let a minority of folks who chain their dogs run public policy? I cannot think of one positive that comes from allowing dogs to be chained in the city of Bristol, Tennessee. Can you? Not all residents must install a chain link fence. You can purchase an electronic fence for $150. Pet owners can bring the dog into the home, which is free. I do not believe that people who chain their dogs have the right to make Bristol a dangerous city. It is your job to improve the city, make it safe for all. Please be the voice for the voiceless. Have Bristol be a leader in eliminating animal abuse and neglect in the tri-cities. The majority of dog owners and voters do not chain their dogs. Please do not allow a small minority of people who by their own choice do not take proper care of their dogs. Chain Free Bristol and all of its supporters encourage you to pass this ordinance. And also to address the gentleman that if you pass this ordinance, Chain Free Bristol will not be going away. We will continue to build fences for free to pet owners who agree to spay and neuter all pets in the household, the inside dogs and the outside dogs. I am asking you to please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Liza.
I'm Mary Geiger, Bristol, Tennessee, and I have been an animal advocate for greater than 20 years, involved with education, adoption, rescue, and I'm here to request that you will pass this ordinance unanimously. I think a unanimous vote would send a strong message on the expectation of humane treatment of our pets. Those of us who've been involved in animal rescue will be haunted our whole lives by what we have seen in abuse, not just overt abuse, but neglect and indifference. And I think this is a positive first step in overdue humane care of our animals. Life at the end of a tether, under the best of circumstances, is nevertheless still life at the end of a tether. And who of us would want to live that way? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Geiger.
My name is David Hyde, and I live in Redstone, South Division. And after learning, by the way, Mr. Jones, I do have a dog in this hunt. I've got several. But after learning that the city council has passed on first reading the ordinance where I can't tether my dog after dark or before daylight, and no one spoke against it, I felt obligated to speak on behalf of other responsible dog owners, and I thank you for being here tonight. In looking at the anti-tethering information on the internet and other places, I found on PETA's website, Mr. Broughton, there's only 16 cities in the United States that prohibit tethering, and there's 64 that restrict it, and only three of those are in Tennessee. I also became aware after looking at the replay of the council meeting where there was an estimated 120 cases or so of animal cruelty that the Bristol Animal Control went to last year. However, none of those, there was ever indicated how many of those were from tethering. It's not clear. And when I called each one of you on the city council and asked you, you could not tell me that information either, and I still do not know. And I look on the website, and I look at all the information, and I see the, all the pictures of the poor sad faces, all the dogs being tethered. And that's on PETA's and ASPA's website. I can't understand why you would make and pass legislation without having all the information before you. Your amendment on the current tethering law makes no distinction between pulley or fixed point tethers. You are also encroaching on my property rights, in this case, the property being not only my dog, but my land as well. You fail to take in consideration those of us who have sporting dogs or working dogs, and how it is impractical to bring them in each and every day, or to those who have family members who have allergies, or in Mr. Jones's case, his mother wants security in her backyard. So, as you guessed, yes, I'm a dog owner. I've got several of them. I'm a registered breeder with the AKC, and yes, the local veterinarians have read me the riot act on breeding, and how I'm supposed to be responsible with the breeding practices. Yet, they are not familiar with the practices of breeding of sporting dogs. I've had my dogs x-rayed with forehip dysplasia. They are checked regularly by veterinarians. I've had them to the Virginia Tech School of Veterinary Medicine. I even have sperm stored in their sperm bank there for my dog so I can recreate him when he dies. I pay more each year in veterinary bills than most people pay in a lifetime. So, I do not abuse my dogs. I have registered dogs. I have championship pedigrees. In fact, my male Labrador has 15 field championship in his pedigree and 12 confirmation championships in pedigree. And again, the veterinarian that I used to go to did not know the difference between a confirmation championship or a field championship. Bristol does not seem to be the Mecca for sporting dogs. I run my dogs in field trials, and I hunt them. I've also consulted a veterinarian who is familiar with sporting dogs, and that's Leonard Pilkington, and he says it is no harm to tether a dog. I'm also an insurance agent. I sell homeowners' insurance. That ensures the liability for people who have dogs. In the 33 years that I've been an insurance agent, I've only had three cases of dog bites. None of those were from tethered animals. But yet, according to PETA, ASPCA, and Chain Free Bristol, tethering dogs is cruel and makes a dog mean and unsociable. If that's the case, then explain to me how my neighbor's kids, age nine, five, and three, can come in my yard and play with my... can come in my yard and play with my dogs, on and off, to tether. They kick balls, they throw balls, my dog retrieves them. You need to see a three-year-old girl lead a 12-year-old 100-pound chocolate Labrador around on a leash. Tethering, cruel, and mean? Anything but. Anti-tethering law will deny dog owners the right to securely confine their dogs in their own yard. This will also increase the practice of making the shipping crate the dog's primary evening enclosure. If a dog owner cannot afford a kennel, or a fence, and they don't want to have their dog spay or neuter, like mine, or they have a family member with allergies, the kennel, the crate is going to be the only thing they can go to. Is tethered synonymous with being exposure to weather extremes? It could be, but so can being in a backyard or in a kennel with an inadequate doghouse. A dog either inside or outside is far better off than one that has moved out during the day and in at night. An animal's fur has to adjust with the climate. And when an animal is moved between extremes, between hot and cold, the coat cannot adjust. So when I take my dog hunting, and I'm in a rice field, two inches thick ice, and we have to break the ice, and my dog retrieves ducks all day long, I need his coat to be as thick as humanly or canineally possible. So consider this before you vote. A dog in a crate, in a good-sized crate, has four to six square feet of living area. A kennel dog in a six-by-12 average kennel has 72 square feet of living space. The poor dog on a 15-foot tether has over 700 square feet to move about. And the tethered dog with a 20-foot tether has over 1,256 square feet. So which do you consider cruel? This ordinance will punish both dogs and responsible dog owners. And it's also going to be basically a nosy neighbor law, because that's how you say you're going to enforce it. Have your neighbor report you. So it's going to make Bristol a real good place to live when you have neighbors reporting neighbors. Last month, in the meeting, you had a local businessman tell you about the sign police and the abuses. They feel that. If you pass this legislation, your phones will ring off the wall, and people will corner you everywhere you go about stories about the dog police. Ladies and gentlemen, if someone's going to abuse a dog, they're going to abuse a dog, whether it's tethered or not. If it's in good health, it shouldn't matter. I urge you not to pass this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Anyone else wish to address the council on this particular issue?
Hello. My name is Fred Slagel. I live in Bristol, Tennessee, and I don't think that tethering a dog is the part that we're wanting to take out. When you take a dog and you leave it on a chain 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all year, it doesn't benefit the dog at all. When you take a dog and you put it out on a chain, and then you let it off and let it play with the kids and stuff, that's not going to be an aggressive dog. Okay? You're spending time with the dog. You're spending time with the animal. You're socializing with the animal. What I think this law does is it helps people see that leaving a dog out on its chain, or tether, or whatever you call it, all day long, all night long, all year long, isn't good. I mean, how would you like to be tied up to a tree in your backyard all year? I mean, it's kind of stupid to think that, you know, leaving a dog out there is okay. I mean, if you have a hunting dog or whatever, their coat has oils. Okay? Yes, that's good for water retrieval dogs. But no, it's not going to hurt them bringing them inside the house at nighttime. It's not going to make their coat any less, I mean, your hair stays the same whether you are outside or inside. Same thing on a dog. The oils on its skin provide the protection from the weathering. And on the spay and neuter part, the reason they want you to spay and neuter your animals is so we will have less animals in the shelters to be put down. If you take an animal and you breed it, and you sell it to somebody, that's another animal in the shelter that's not going to be, you know, bought, or cared for, or loved for. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Bob Sadler, and I applaud the council for the dog park. I think that was a great step forward. And I speak for the animals. They cannot speak for themselves. I have close to my business animals that are chained 24 hours a day. They, the people pay no attention to them. And this gentleman back here, I can tell he's a dog lover. He takes care of his, forever one, and then him, there's 20 that never take care of their dogs. They never walk them, they pay no attention to them. So I urge the council to pass this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Anyone else wish to speak to this particular matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
I'll move to approve.
All right. Margaret, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'm going to second this motion so that we can move forward and have an open discussion as council. So I'll make that second. And is there a discussion by council?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have spoken to citizens on both sides of the issues. Similar issues that came about tonight from both sides. Some are concerned of ethical treatment of the dogs, and some are concerned of ethical treatment of all animals, not only dogs. Some citizens concerned about their rights versus the dog rights. Some citizens work graveyard shift, so their dogs are inside their home all day, and at night they put them on the chain or leash when they go to work. Some citizens hunt, and they train their dogs. There were 76 court cases out of 1,000 registered dog owners in Bristol, Tennessee. So that ratio is below 1%. With this amending ordinance, I don't believe we're answering all the concerns on both sides of this issue. I think the council needs to go back and talk about this much more in detail, to come up with a resolution that would please both sides of this issue, and also protects the rights of the dogs or all animals, shall we say. Currently, we have city code for dog tethering, section 10-46. We have section -10-6, code of ordinances on cruelty of animals. On the state level, we have 39-14-201 on definitions for animal offenses. We also have TCA 39-14-202 on cruelty to animals. And on the state level and the city level, there are laws that protect the dogs and all the animals, and address the issue of animal cruelty. I personally don't feel comfortable with this existing vote that addressed the concerns of all the citizens, and my job is here as a councilman to protect and present all the citizens. So I motioned that, I don't know if I can, but I motioned to table this ordinance for further discussion.
We have a motion and a second already.
Correct.
His motion to table then would take precedent, so you'd have to act on that if there's a second to that motion.
If there's a second to tables?
A second.
Okay. Then we've got a motion to table, and Michelle, a second.
And any discussion with the table, or no?
I'd like to weigh in on that, if you don't mind. The practice, this council and councils, and tabling is, tabling of an ordinance is kind of a awkward movement to take if, because it leaves something in limbo and it never puts it away. It's just there in suspension. A better action really would be to, if the tabling motion is to not act, or to not move forward with the change, and another way to get there is to vote against the change. And that then puts it complete and puts it down, and it's not held in suspense forever. So, and that's not to say you can't table this or anything, because it's an act of Robert's Rules that is available to you, but as a practice, in my experience, councils typically don't do that. That's because it just leaves it out there in limbo, and it's an ordinance that you always have to keep track of. And it can always be brought forward through an untabling motion at a future meeting. Somebody can come back, and all of a sudden something's on the floor without any awareness that it's going to be untabled, and then all, there's nobody here to react to it. There's no staff material there to support, to bring the matter back where there can be a cogent discussion. So tabling, it's kind of a tough thing to do, and maybe not a good thing to do. It would be better to vote up or down, and that way it's done. And if it's going to be brought forward again, it goes through the whole process again, and there's, everybody knows.
Thank you for your input. I believe that this is not the best option, as far as not allowing tethering after sunset to sunrise, and I would like to further discuss to see what options that we can come up with. So I will, I would like the motion to remain.
Anyone else wish to weigh in on the motion to table?
If this is our opportunity to make statements, first off, I would agree with Mr. Broughton that it's probably better to vote it down, and then we put it on a work session agenda or whatever, if that's what, or vote on it up or down. But I, my comments that I was going to make are that you, and I'll add to it, I think somebody has said before, you can't please all the people all the time. And that's the kind of work that we're in, being on city council, is we have to make choices. And leadership takes courage. To be early in the ballgame, to step out and pass rules like this, takes a lot of courage. But I do believe it is the right direction to go. And I could comment on some other, that you can't legislate morals, or, and I would disagree. And personally, where I live, I've experienced three homeowners who have tethered. One dog that died, one dog that was totally ignored, and I believe it died because it was on the tether. And I reported, and our animal control did what they could. And I believe other folks who didn't, who left their dog out 24/7, had we had a rule like this, they would not have done that, and the dog would have been treated better. So I think it can make a difference, and it can help our residents to do a better job taking care of their pets by our demonstrating what is important. And I believe that the folks who do have, I appreciate Mr. Hyde's situation, his obviously well-cared dog, cared-for dogs. And I believe that certainly those situations can be worked out, that people can, can have them out on a run part of the time, and in a pen part of the time, and there's ways to make them healthy hunting dogs, and achieve the goal that you wish to achieve at the same time. So I support this move, and will be disappointed to see it tabled.
Jack, the first vote, of course, would be the motion to table. If that is, if that does not carry, then we revert to the original motion.
You've got the original motion on the floor.
Anyone else wish to weigh in? I'll just say that, you know, it is, it's difficult to legislate morality, but we do that all the time. It's against the law to harm someone else. It's against the law to steal from them. It's against the law to do all kinds of nasty things to people, and animal, and children, and other people's property, and, you know, that's, that's the society that we live in. You know, it's a far better, far better society than, you know, ruled by those strongest in the community. That's why we legislate a lot of things. It's impossible to watch everyone, to make sure everybody treats their pet right. Different individuals have different attitudes of pets from the smallest little yip-yap on somebody's lap to a sporting dog, or work dog like someone who guides the blind. There's, you know, it's hard across the board to, you know, make something that's right for everyone. We struggle with trying to protect those in our community, pets, or individuals, or whoever, who are not in a position to protect themselves. With that said, we have a motion and a second. I think we've all weighed in on it.
I'd like to say one thing.
Please do.
I would rather see it voted up or down than to be tabled. We either accept it, or we don't accept it. So I will not be supporting the tabling.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. With that said, I think the first vote, Terry, then, is the motion to table. We have a motion and a second, so please call the roll on that one.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Byer-Avila?
No.
Vice Mayor State?
No.
Mayor Shoemaker?
No. Now we revert, then, Jack, to the original motion to approve this ordinance as it's written. We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion on this particular issue?
If this is voted down, can this issue be visited by the council for a better resolution to protect the animals, the citizens?
Of course.
Thank you.
I know, and I'll make this for what it's worth. I know you didn't want to have it changed, but last time I tried to change it to be June rather than March, so if I could make an amendment, but I can't, then the amendment's going to fail probably. Anyway, I'd still rather see it in June rather than March, and give Chain Free Bristol plenty of time to put up lots of fences, and to give individuals more time and warmer weather to be able to put up fences, or underground fences, or pens, or whatever it is that they would want to do to help out.
Margaret, you brought up about the underground fences. As far as I know, they will keep your dog in your yard. They will not keep an outside dog from getting in your yard and attacking your dog. So as far as I'm concerned, they're worthless.
We've had one for a very long time, but we do not leave our dog outside when we're not home.
Right.
So, we've also tethered in the past as well, with a run, with a dog who wouldn't stay inside. So we've never tethered at night, we never tethered when we weren't home.
Any other member of council have any other comments?
I think the tough issue comes in with the stringency of the sundown-to-sunup situation, because that's going to be easy to regulate, but it's not very practical. And so for people that tether, the best-case scenario is if they would have their dog off the tether for a certain amount of time every day, but yet that's going to be harder to regulate. So it's kind of... So it's kind of...
The enforceability is discretionary.
Correct. So if we could have further discussion to see if we could come up with a better alternative, I would definitely like to see that happen.
I also think it takes courage to listen to both sides of the stories and listen to all the citizens. It takes courage to present all the citizens and protect the animals.
Any, any other comment? Terry, I think we're ready for the vote on the original measure.
Councilman Sandy?
No.
Councilwoman Dolan?
No.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
No.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes. This motion fails for lack of vote. And we can revisit this at any time. Anything that we do, we can always revisit. We are moving on then to, I'm sorry, we've gone to a different page here.
11-24.
I'll just have to mark this one up. I've written all of it. Moving on to ordinance 11-24, Mr. Broughton, tell us about that.
Ordinance number 11-24 is an ordinance to amend section 78-2 of the Code of Ordinances relating to weeds, leaves, grass, and overgrowth. You'll recall from my comments on this last month at our last meeting, we had this provision enacted into code in 2007. We did a very extensive rewrite of our codes after that and through that process inadvertently deleted this section. So you should see this as a housekeeping measure to reinsert a provision that was previously put into code. And what it does is gives the code enforcement staff, when they have property maintenance issues, gives them legislation to approach that property owner when a home is so overgrown with shrubs and trees and so forth that it'd be cut to the principal residential structure, not to an outbuilding or anything else, gives them a basis upon which to talk to them and cause them, ask them to cut back. And you can imagine how significant that can be if, if, because, you know, dwellings are designed to have points of access and you, and you have situations where points of access or, and exit are actually blocked in ways because of overgrowth, which makes it a hazardous situation, particularly in a fire situation. So this just puts into effect something that probably in my, in my time here in Bristol, I can only remember one time when this code provision was necessary and came into play, but that one time was important because it was in a, in a very dense, tightly knit residential block on the west end, actually. And we had no way to address that. And by having this code provision, we were able to address it. So we asked that you reinsert in the code for those few times when we, when we need something like that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Is there any clarification needed by council? Anyone in attendance wish to address to council on this particular matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Second.
Go ahead. We give that one to Joel. Margaret, you'll get number two there. All right. We got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion by council? Housekeeping needed, in my opinion. One of those things that often faced with, everybody wants their neighbor to clean up their property. They don't want to be told what to do with theirs. But from time to time, obviously, we get a, get a lot of calls from folks that, that see the need in their own neighborhood of individuals that just need to get out there with that mower. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Sandy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes. Moving on then to resolutions. First up, resolution 11-121.
Resolution 11-121 is a resolution accepting a strategic economic development plan. The, over the past four or five months now, the, a citizens' steering committee has been working, putting together a recommended strategy to, for this community to be successful in its economic growth and sustainability going forward in time. The, the committee completed its work last month. This is the plan. All members of city council received this and we, it was reviewed in work session last month. So what this action will do tonight will be to accept the work of your steering committee, the steering committee that was assembled, accept that, and it becomes a starting point for how this community partners, the city partners with 14 other identified entities in ways identified specifically in the plan to enhance the economic climate of this community. The key element of this plan development was that it was recognized by the group, by the steering committee, that the city alone's not going to be able to make the economy grow. It's the city partnering with other entities. All of us have a stake in its success. And so we needed, the committee felt that the, the, the plan needed to be driven outside of the walls of city hall and bring in other partners who have a natural relationship and interest in their respective areas for causing the community to succeed economically. And so the plan does that, establishes 14, 14 different partnerships with groups like the Chamber of Commerce, the Paramount Theater, King College, Network Sullivan Partnership, Bristol Regional Medical Center, and the other nine, the other nine I haven't named. And identifies 70 specific objectives that are spread with those different partners that we will work with them as either the primary person responsible or entity responsible for achieving the objective or in a secondary supportive role to move this community forward. And the plan includes, and council knows because this was reviewed, it includes an economic mission statement there and there are key performance metrics that are included so we can track over time important data points as to, that are relevant to the economy of our community to see what kind of successes we're having, have going forward. The intent of the plan is to revisit it in this, between the second and third year and see how much progress we've made in achieving those priority objectives that are identified. And between year two and three, go in and refresh the plan and adjust it based on the real-time activities that occur in a dynamic community like Bristol is. So the plan is presented to the council. You're being asked tonight through the resolution to accept it. And at our December work session, one of the items that we will have on the discussion will be to pick up where we left off at our November work session, which was where the council will identify and add to, put additional elements into our strategy going forward in time. So that'll be on your December work session as well. So I do want to recognize the committee that was assembled and put in a lot of time. I mean, this was not easy. There was, they put a lot of time in on this over the course of four months. Let me just read their names because they need to be recognized verbally. That's Nell Keen Beeger, William C. Burris Jr., Jerry Caldwell, Lois Clark, Nancy DePries, Bart Hove, Greg Jordan, Raj Van Keterman, David Wagner, and Mitch Walters. That group of 10 citizens served as the core group that worked through this process and has recommended the plan that you have before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Is there, is there a need for any additional clarification from, from staff?
Will this be available to interested citizens?
Well, it's on our website. So anybody can go to Bristol, Tennessee website. You should find it pretty easily. And we'll put one or two with the library as well, so they'll have it available there for folks, both branch, the branch library and the, and the main library. But it's, you can pull, you can read it online and of course print it off or do what you want. So, yeah, it's there.
Is there anyone in attendance wish to address to council on this particular matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
Thank you, Ben and Joel. Additional discussion then by council?
I just want to thank the committee to put this plan together. They have done a tremendous job working so hard, putting this plan together with the busy schedule they have. And this is truly the, the direction this city needs and hopefully council will put execution addendum to it and, and push it forward. It is really good for our city and I'm very proud of this plan and proud to be part of it. So the future looks fantastic.
Thank you, Ben. Who else?
I want to also thank the folks who presented. There was a lot who did presentations. And thanks to the partners, and I think work had already begun before we even started strategic planning, but a lot of work has also already started since the, the plan was completed and working to be sure that the partners were in agreement with some of the things that came out of this. Also need to thank, give tremendous thanks to staff for how much time this took. Strategic planning does take a lot of time, but then hopefully like land use plans and comprehensive plans, it's the roadmap, so it saves time later on and also puts you in the direction that you really want to go. And I think this is our first huge effort on strategic planning, so really appreciate, appreciate that, although our Paramount plan is also strategic planning as well. So greatly appreciate it and look forward to our adding our thoughts to it and to watch it move, help watch it move forward.
Thank you, Margaret. I'll, I'll just say, Margaret, you aggravate me sometimes, but, but, you know, you hardly ever hear Margaret speak. She doesn't talk about we need a strategic plan. And we got this plan now for our economic development. You know, it's hard to know where you're going unless you have a map and a direction and know which course to take. We have that now. I want to thank staff. Y'all have been busting your butts on this, working with the committee for a long time. Appreciate that. A lot of folks have, have put a lot of effort into this and I think it'll pay dividends to this community. Thank you. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Sandy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes. Resolution 11-127.
Resolution number 11-127 is a resolution adjusting council manic districts so as to give due regard to an equalization of population. The city charter requires that the election districts of the city be drawn so they have basically equal population. Each of the three districts that we have within our city, that they have the same approximate number of people. So with the 20 census data now out and available, we went and looked at the current election districts with the new census data to see how close they were to being equally populated. There is a, there is a standard of acceptability that I guess the courts have found over time, and that's to have a range of equal population within 10% satisfies, satisfies an equalization of dis, district threshold standard. When we looked at our three districts, our current range is 9.75%. And I'll talk a little bit more here in a second. So we're below that 10% standard, but we're right there. And so we looked at reducing that percentage of that range to a lower number without disrupting to any large degree the districts, and I think we've been able to do that. The charter also requires that the planning commission review and recommend to you the new districts, which they have done and is what you're being asked to sign off on tonight. Next slide, Jerry. There is the three districts that, that we have. We have the east district, we have the, which is green at the top right. We have the west district, which is blue, and the south district, which is yellow. The two, what's, what we have right now is the green, the green district or the east district has basically 5% more people than it should, whereas, and the south district has almost 5% less than it should. So you've got too many people in essence in the east district, not enough in the south. And the west district's about where it should be. Next slide, Jerry. The, looking at the census data, let's go to the next slide. The next slide, we identified a couple of minor tweaks that the planning commission is recommending to you that will move that population around a little bit and reduce that population range to about half of what it currently is. It'll bring it down to about 5.8%. And what basically you're seeing there is, and I'll talk you through it real easy, it's real easy to follow. The east district again is, has too many people, so we need to migrate some people out of the east for purposes of this. And so the A is the first section that is, was green and will be moving to the, to the blue or to the west district. And that A section is, that A section has about 117 people in it. So we're moving 117 folks out of the east in green to the blue. And then the second change is at the bottom of that, and that's in red. And the red is moving again from the east district, which has too many people, moving it to the south. And that, that has 116 people. So in the one case, A, there's 117 people moving over in that small area. And in, in the second case, in B in the map, we're moving 116 people over. And by making those small changes, we reduced that range, as I mentioned, down to about 5.8%. What you have is still, the east is still bigger than the others, but now it's close, it's only 2.5% bigger. The south is still smaller, but it's, it's only about 3% smaller. And, and again, the west is about right on the nose. And of course, this doesn't mean anything except for people that want to run for office because the way we elect in our community, everybody votes for everybody, no matter where they live. You don't vote for only people that live in your district. So this only affects somebody that wants to run for the Board of Education or the city council. So for those people that want to be a candidate, and if they're running for the, at the election where they're a district representative as opposed to an at-large, which we have two and is a whole different story, doesn't, that map means nothing in that case. This only affects the number of candid, where a candidate will run as to what district they're in. So what's happening? The blue district is having a few more potential candidates than they had in the past. The yellow's having a few more potential candidates. And the, the east, the green, has a few less candidates. So that's all this does. It puts us in conformity, I think, in a little stronger way with the standard and the requirement of the charter to have about right, same number of people in each of the district. The planning commission, as I've already mentioned, has recommended it to you and we ask that you accept their recommendation and adopt the revised boundary maps for local city elections.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Any clarification needed by council?
Is there any reason why that there wasn't more population shifted to the south?
The, the only reason is we, we tried to disrupt the existing boundaries as little as we needed to. We could have lived with it just like it was because it was under 10% as I mentioned, but it was so close to 10%. And by just those little areas, we could make that, reduce that by half. It seemed to be a good thing to do. Again, it doesn't affect equal voting rights. Everybody has the same voting right if you choose. Everybody has the same voting right if you change it or you don't change it. All it does is it affect those few people every four years that decide to run for city council or, or board of education from a district. It just modifies slightly what district that person would run in, if anybody in those areas ever would be running in the first place. Again, our goal was not to do a wholesale change. Let's just look at it, do the minimal amount we can do and bring it, that range, bring it down a little tighter, reduce it, and that's what, what we can do with this, as it's before you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to address the council on this particular matter?
In the way that you've done that, it just feels that, are you anticipating growth in that area to help bring up your, your balance of members in the way you pre-districted? Or the cynical side says you've brought, apparently you've drawn a streak in, it does make these candidates who want to be in a certain district run in that district. So, I guess my question is, are you anticipating growth in those areas to help break those, the blue and the yellow section into balance?
Terry, would you note that Mr. Ellis has asked a question so that we get you in the record?
Yeah. And it's a little awkward, because our practice is not to answer questions on, from the audience in that way, but because it's a good question, the answer to the question, I think, maybe I should have expanded in my explanation, where we seem to be growing residentially is in the east district. And that's why we were overpopulated in terms of that relative population. And I would suspect and expect, given our growth patterns, that it's probably going to be the same. But because we grow at such a low level, in the last decade, we grew about 8%, you know, 1% a year, a little less than 1% a year. It's not likely going to affect anything in a way that creates this disproportionate number before the next election, next census in 2020. And then we'll go through that same process again and adjust it. And of course, when we annex property as a part of the annexation ordinance, we identify where that area that it's annexed, what district it comes into. And it typically, there's not a whole lot of choice, because they're typically in, clearly in a green or a blue area. But in those cases where there may be an opportunity, we can, you know, where they come together, there could be, certainly be an opportunity to recognize that and put them into the, in this case, with the green and the blue, you'd put it into the south district, because it has less people than it needs. So, and there's no cynicism. We had the, we had Mr. Metzger pull this together, and of course, David doesn't, I'm not even sure if he knows, he's not an election guy, put it that way. But he, he's our census guy, and he looked at figure out what's minimum, what's the minimalist action to get us a little bit tighter, closer to equal population in each of those districts.
Anyone else wish to address the council on this particular matter? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of council? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Margaret. And Michelle, have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion by council?
Mr. Broden, when was the last time districts were looked at?
Well, I wasn't here. I'm going to ask Mike, David, maybe you can answer that?
As best I remember, the three districts were created, and I know this because it's 14 years ago, and it's when they went from five districts to three, three larger districts in order to sort of increase the number of people who might be able to participate in the individual district races and disturb more people to run for city council. And when that happened, two of the council members wound up being in the same district. John Gaines and Pat Hickey. And Pat Hickey decided not to run in that election against his fellow council member, John Gaines stepped off, created, and there was, the west district had no one in it, and I ran for that race. Got, got beaten in that particular race. But anyway, that was 14 years ago that this three district was created. Since that time, and I don't remember how many years ago, it was tweaked once before because, again, you kind of get out of balance. If you look at the west district, west district has 3,000 acres of Stills Creek Park in it. Not a lot of growth unless we start counting squirrels as voters. So, the east district, more has been built up there. So, if that continues, the east district will have more and more population and decrease in size, whereas the west district has not typically grown very much. And the same, I guess, with the south. So, is that a pretty good explanation?
Yeah. My guess is it probably was when the last census was done, probably 2000, Mike's got his hand up.
The law requires that after the census is done, you should say that, have you reevaluated your, your district or council district?
10 years.
And the rule that's followed is there has to be plus or minus, you can't be more than plus or minus 5%. So, you have to get into the, the rulings on, that's what we call it. The east district is slightly over the 5%. While we say 10%, we're talking plus or minus 5%. The census is over, that's why we're, we're, and the law requires that after the census that will, and these are the officials.
Well, the, the little weird tail there, B, on the south district, that seems to make sense anyway, just to clean up that little gerrymandered piece down there anyway.
That was an annexation from a few of the, the, the.
In the east district? Any other question or discussion from council? Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Sandy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Firehobbit?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Mayor Sheenmaker?
Yes. Resolution 11-130.
Resolution number 11-130 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Solar Park Initiatives Inc. for a solar energy project under the Tennessee Valley Authority Generation Partners Program. This is a project that came about, oh, maybe, I'm going to say half a year ago. We had an inquiry from a company, it's not a head of them actually, about taking advantage of a program TVA offers, where you can generate power and sell it back, Green Meter set up, where you actually, in this case, solar, solar fields, collect power from the sun, sell it back to TVA. And it started out with the plan to, when they approached us, the best site we could identify and made all the sense in the world was our demolition landfill site. You know, we have an active demolition landfill going on a part of the grounds, but on other parts of the ground, it's closed and we have no use, and it's out in the hinterlands of our community, in our city. And so, the idea of putting a solar farm on that landfill and generating power, green power, and also being compensated for it as a city made a whole lot of sense. So, we started out as a staff, working with this company, with the intent of putting one megawatt of generation capability at the landfill. Well, what, what happened, as things happened, is TVA changed their program. And at one, and when, at first, they would allow up to one megawatt of generation at a site. They adjusted it down and would allow no more than 200 kilowatts of generation, a one-fifth of the amount. And, and in fact, they're in the process of reducing that even further, and there's, and there's some urgency to this because of that. So, we had to identify additional sites beyond demolition landfill, because this wasn't a proposition, an investment proposition for the company that was wanting to put the solar farm in without one megawatt of power generation. The economics didn't work for them. So, we went about trying to identify five sites that would be conducive to 200 KW generation, solar generation, solar farms. And we identified five sites, and it would, we struggled a little bit to identify five, but the five that we identified are shown. They include the raw water intake below the spillway below South Holson Dam, includes the water plant near, of course, the lake. Our water plant includes the wastewater plant, which as you know is off Beaver Creek Road, includes our demolition landfill in that same area of our community. And Avoca Elementary School was the fifth site that we were able to identify as potential locations. Sherri, next site. And that's, that's what a solar farm will look like. It's, it'll take up about an acre of ground, and, you know, it could be square, it could be rectangle, it's whatever ground you have, where they can configure about an acre's worth of solar panels that will collect the sun and ship it back to TVA as part of their generation, to, for the purposes of their selling of electricity. Next slide, Sherri. The, what you're being asked to approve tonight is a memorandum of understanding. We have basically the details of the, of the deal fleshed out, but the agreements, and there's several agreements, those have not been drafted, they, they're pretty complicated. We didn't want to go down that process without knowing that you were willing to lease city property in some cases for this. So, the MOU is, again, and it's there for you to read, and I know you have, but it sets out the relationship that allows us to enter into the agreements, provided all of the agreements are satisfactory, and that includes the financial arrangements. We talked about the site being acceptable. These are all ground mounted sites, but even though they're ground mounted, we still have some concerns, particularly behind Avoca School. So, you know, it's, it sets up a process where we can enter into this agreement. And what is the financial compensation to the city and to the school system and to Bristol, Virginia by doing this? And the reason the other parties are in this conversation, and they have to sign off it on their end, is the Avoca site is school property. So, the generation, the lease payment and the, the credit on their power bill will go to the school system for the Avoca site. Bristol, Virginia comes into play, because one of the sites is the wastewater plant, and they jointly own that with us. So, Bristol, Virginia will have to sign off on that site. TVA's going to have to sign off, because the water plant site is on property lease from TVA, the water, raw water intake, I meant. And so, TVA's, so we have other parties that also have to sign off on this thing. But basically, if it, if it all comes together, will it come together? It may, it may not. But the only way to get there is by your approval tonight. So, but what does it mean if it comes together? The company will pay $6,000 a year for each one of those five sites. So, a total of $30,000 that gets spread to the parties based on who owns the site over the term of the lease, which 10-year, all we're talking about is a 10-year lease for these solar collectors. And then on top of the 6,000 lease payment, they will pay 2 cents for each kilowatt hour produced and sold back to TVA. Now, the TVA, actually, the TVA program actually gives a 12 cents credit. So, where they're getting their money is they're keeping 10 cents of the credit from what's being generated and sold back to TVA for resale, and we get 2 cents of that. And we estimate for each of those sites, that to be about a $5,000 a year savings on our bill, because it's a credit on our bill. So, when you combine all of those, the lease payment and the 2 cents credit, it brings in about $550,000 over the course of the 10-year lease agreement. Again, we get 100% of that at the water plant and at the demolition landfill. We would get half of that at the, and the raw water intake. We'd get half that for the facility out at the wastewater plant, and then the schools would get 100% of the Avoca site. So, that, I think that summarizes, I don't, I think that's all on my slides, that summarizes it. Again, as I, this is kind of an interesting project. It has benefits beyond, you know, what it is financially. I had really, we had really started out hopeful we could have one large solar farm out there at the landfill, but that just isn't possible under the revised guidelines. So, this is the best way we can get there. If for some reason we can't get all five sites approved by the other parties or acceptable to us as to the configuration, and if there's not another one to be found, this will not happen, because they, what they're saying is that unless they can have one megawatt of generation capability, which means five sites at 200,000, it doesn't make sense. They're, they're talking about an investment of as much as $4 million to put all that in and then to maintain it over the course of the period of time. So, we're asking you if you'll be willing to move in that direction to approve this memorandum with the understanding. If all the other pieces come together, we'll sign the necessary agreements to allow it to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Is there a clarification needed from staff? Anyone in attendance this evening wish to speak to this matter? We're starting to really wear you down, aren't we? We really cut the numbers in the audience tonight. All right. What is the pleasure of council?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
All right. Ben, that's a, that's a motion, and Joel a second. And additional discussion by council?
Awesome.
Wow.
Can they put one in my backyard?
You can.
I don't know.
Yeah, I would just, we're waiting for TVA approval to put some on our roof, some panels.
I'll just say Bristol, Virginia has, they're working on possibly methane capturing at the landfill, being able to sell that gas into the gas company. I just think this is a neat, a very progressive way for us to go. With the sites that you're talking about, you're talking about basically buffering around what we've got there anyway. And, and that buffering could, could be helping us become more energy efficient. In addition, every dollar that we make off of that is a dollar that we don't have to get from the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee, which is always a good thing. So, I just think that's wonderful. I'm going to check my burpy seed catalog first of the year and see if I can get some of those solar farm seeds. Grow a few.
Let me find some, let me have some, please.
All right. Ms. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Councilman Sandy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Firehobbit?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State?
Yes.
Mayor Sheenmaker?
Yes. Moving on, resolution 11-132. Mr. Broden?
Resolution number 11-132 is a resolution authorizing the use of certain real property for public school purposes under the authority of the board of education. Why don't you fast forward to a photo there, Sherri? Let's go to the photo. That little house there is located on Edgemont Avenue, two-bedroom home with a basement, located on Edgemont Avenue, basically right in front of Tennessee High. Next, flip, go backwards for me there. There's an aerial view, the, the house there circled in blue, and you can see Viking Hall is right there, almost directly across street with Tennessee High, a little bit further up to the street. But it basically, it's, it fronts the campus of the high school. We acquired that property through a foreclosure action. The city had a second mortgage on it, the home went bankrupt, the bank didn't want the property, so we stepped up and took it. We were prepared to seek bids, listed for sale, rather, and ask the school assistant, because of its location, if they had any interest in it and use for it, and they do. And so, what this action will do is authorize, even though the title remains in the city's hands, authorize the schools to use it for school purposes. And what they plan to do is And what they plan to do is with their building maintenance people, go in and fix it up a little bit and use that as a location to house Confucius Institute educators, the Chinese teachers that they have a relationship with, that are now coming and teaching Mandarin in the high school and middle school. As a part of that program, they have to provide housing for those teachers, and they also have to provide transportation to their work site. Because of this loca, because it's a house, with a little bit of fix up, they can have a nice place for these teachers to live. Because of its location, the teachers can walk across the street to Tennessee High or down the street to Ban, so it really works well for their needs. And so, the schools, we talked with the director of schools, he bounced past his board of ed, and they, they're interested in it if you are willing to give it. And when you give it, you're giving them the right to use it if they ever were to sell it because they don't need it anymore. Because it's titled in the city of Bristol, we would have to prove the title, the sale to another party. And the informal understanding that Dr. Lilly and I have is if they ever were to do that, that we have $6,900 embedded in buying, buying the note back. And so, if they were ever to sell it, they would pay us $6,900 back as a part of what we invested in with general tax monies to get it so we can in turn, turn it over to them. So, we, we think it's a good use and ask you to approve, meaning the schools use it for that purpose. And they're ready to put some improvements in it if you'll do so.
Any clarification needed from, from counsel on this? Let me ask a question here. Y'all have an informal agreement. Dr. Lilly, you're going to go somewhere else sometime, retired. Mr. Broden, you're going to go somewhere else sometime.
I'm going to formalize it in a letter though for the file.
There you go. That's what I'm asking is what happens after all of us are gone and, and, you know, sometimes informal agreements change over, over time, don't they, Ms. Talbot? Anyway, just, just got a question there. Anybody in attendance wish to address this particular matter? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of counsel?
The first.
Second.
Thank you, Joel and Ben. And any additional discussion needed? Hearing none, Ms. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Counselwoman Zandi.
Yes.
Counselwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Counselwoman Fire Robin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor State.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shoemaker.
Yes.
Last up on resolutions, Resolution 11 dash 133, Mr. Broden.
Resolution number 11, 133 is a resolution approving the submission of a fast track infrastructure development program grant application to the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development to assist Sprint telecenters. This is, the formality required for the city to seek grant funds from the state Department of Economic and Community Development for an incentive that they have offered, and Sprint has accepted to locate their new call center in Bristol. As a part of the incentive package that came about in that process of trying to keep Sprint in Bristol, being in Bristol, Virginia, or in Bristol, Tennessee, and keep them from migrating outside of our area with the 673 jobs they have. The state committed up to $750,000 under this FIDP grant program that can be used in this case for grading and drainage improvements on the Sprint site, on Sprint Drive, as well as to pay for a traffic signal if a traffic signal is warranted at Sprint Drive and State Route 394. So, this is the formality of submitting the application to the state because we will be the grant recipient on behalf of the state grant funds, much like we just did for the Seaman Corporation expansion, state same grant program coming to the city that was used to benefit in that case Seaman Corporation for their expansion. We've, we're asking for the maximum amount under the program, which is 750,000, and which is what the state committed to do. The reality is, is the project will probably be quite a bit less than that, given the work that has to be done and the purposes that it can be used. It could be as little as $350,000 if the signal isn't warranted, and maybe closer to 550 if the signal is warranted. So, even though we're asking for 750, we should expect the amount that'll be needed for the project will be quite a bit less than that. There is a local match that's required under this program. In our case, the local match is 20%, and the, the county will step up and pay one half of that local match. If it's, of course, if it's that low number of 350,000, that local match for the city and the counties, $35,000 each. But it, it's a part of the incentive package that was put together to, I guess, entice Sprint to Bristol, Tennessee, but really more importantly and purposely, it was to keep them from leaving Bristol proper and moving to North Carolina or Kentucky with a new call center. So, we ask your permission to submit this application.
Any clarification needed from Mr. Broden or staff? Anyone in attendance wish to weigh in on this particular matter? Any comments from the auditor? Hearing none, pleasure of counsel.
Motion to move forward.
Second.
Ben and Joel, thank you. Any additional discussion by counsel?
Great pleasure to have Sprint in Bristol, Tennessee.
Anything else?
Great pleasure to keep the jobs in our area, so bring some warm.
Ms. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Counselwoman Zandi.
Yes.
Counselwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Counselwoman Fire Robin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor State.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shoemaker.
Yes. And we're finally then down to consent agenda. These will be voted on as a group unless there is any one particular item wished to be pulled by a member of counsel. Mr. Broden, will you tell us what's on the consent agenda?
I'm going to read them all. There's 13 of them, and it'll take me a second, but they include the minutes of the November 1st city council meeting, includes the minutes of the November 15th city council work session, includes a resolution 11, 118 authorizing payment in support of a countywide, of the countywide radio system for fiscal 2012. It includes resolution 11 dash 119, which endorses the joint legislative policies of the tri-cities for the 2012 session of the Tennessee General Assembly. Includes resolution 11 dash 120, which authorizes payment for rotary field lighting. Includes resolution 11 dash 122, which is, awards a bid for the purchase of a backhoe. Includes resolution 11 dash 123, which awards a bid for the purchase of a one ton pickup truck. Includes resolution 11 dash 124, which awards a bid for the exterior repairs to the Slater Community Center. Includes resolution 11 dash 125, awarding a bid for ballpark fencing. Includes resolution 11 dash 126, awarding bid for the purchase of a dump truck. Includes resolution 11 dash 128, awarding a bid for the purchase of delivered concrete. Resolution 11 dash 129, awarding bid, a bid for the purchase of an automated side loading refuse collection vehicle. And finally, it includes resolution 11 dash 131, awarding a bid for the purchase of a four door compact SUV.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Is there any member of counsel wish to have any of those items pulled for discussion? If not, Ben, is there a motion by counsel?
So, move.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Joel and Ben. We have a motion and a second. And Terry, we are ready for the vote.
Counselwoman Zandi.
Yes.
Counselwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Counselwoman Fire Robin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor State.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Shoemaker.
Yes.
And with that, we've gone through our packet, we're ready for city managers' report.
Right, I have in, in the packet there a proposed 2012 meeting calendar for your consideration and acceptance. The council policy, well, the, the council, the, I guess it's the charter, sets forth that the council will have its regular meetings like tonight at, on Tuesday of each month. And it's, and we have the practice where we have our work sessions on the third Wednesday of each month. And as a part of the setting the calendar, the calendar year to come, we always meet at the December meeting and look at the upcoming meeting calendar, try and identify any known conflicts like of meetings that we know you typically will attend, to deviate from that schedule at this time and get it accepted, and then publish it for the whole year and have our, have clearly what our scheduled meetings is for the coming year. We looked at the schedule this year and I, and didn't identify any deviations from that normal first Tuesday for the regular meeting, third Tuesday of each month for the work session. Nothing to our knowledge that would be a city oriented function will interfere with that schedule. And so, we're recommending that you approve the 2012 meeting calendar. And with that, we will send this back out as the adopted meeting calendar, and Barbara Ryan will go about getting it published in the paper and getting us fully in sync with the notification requirements for meetings for the coming year. So, I would need a motion to approve this, or if there's a conflict, a city conflict that you know, to bring it to the attention of the council and see if there's reason to move a meeting from what's presented to you.
Does anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We've got a, Michelle a motion, and Joel a second. Any additional discussion?
I have some concern meeting on the third, but at this point I don't have a conflict. Tuesday the third before July 4th, but whether that's the best time or not, but anyway.
Are you out of town?
Not at this point, but that's just potential time for holidays and people having long weekends, et cetera. So, anyway, just throwing that out there. I'm voting for it.
As always, there's a week in May that almost always coincides with our work session that, that I have to work out of town. There's no question about that. I'm sure Vice Mayor Stateen can handle it in my absence. I am pretty confident y'all can go on without me. Any other discussion? If not, Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Counselwoman Zandi.
Yes.
Counselwoman Dolan.
Yes.
Counselwoman Fire Robin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor State.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll, I'll just make one additional comment besides wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. We do have a couple of board openings still that we have not, we didn't receive any candidates' applications for you to consider tonight. Of course, we have the library board, we have one position on the library board whose term runs through the end of December, and so now hopefully we will have a candidate or more that will be interested, that we can put on the agenda for January for you to put somebody on for the next term on the library board. So, that's one position. So, if anybody knows anybody that would be interested as to be a candidate, serve on the library board, you might encourage them to submit an application. And then we have one more position on the tree board, tree board, yeah. That one, that one's been vacant open for some time, so if anybody knows anybody that'd like to serve on the tree board, same message, if they can get their application in, we'll make sure it's before you at the June, January meeting.
Is that it, Mr. Broden?
That, that is it. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Good news, at the networks board meeting, me and Mr. Mayor attended, we had Allen representation from the state talked about how Governor Haslam is looking at reducing regulation for our state of Tennessee to invite businesses to our state, which is a great leadership for our state, that's a good sign. And he's going to promote our state for new businesses and existing businesses, and he also working on a retention plan to work with existing companies in our state to keep them here longer, which is a great leadership, and I think we need to mimic that for our city. The Development Strategic Partnership Economic Growth Development Package is a wonderful package for our cities, I think we should act on it and not let it collect dust and move our city forward, as I'm sure all of you are as excited as I am. I also like to bring a opportunity to the council to think about, perhaps, our downtown is blossoming as we speak on both sides of this street, our sister city and Bristol, Tennessee, we're doing a tremendous job on our downtown, looking fantastic. I wish there was a way that we can work as a joint venture with our sister government and some joint venture projects that can only limit to downtown and even enhance it further more. I still like to have Ms. Margaret to lead us to a wonderful recycling program for our city. I still think that should be something we should focus on for 2012. 2011 has been a wonderful year. I've learned quite a bit being with all of you for past few months. I appreciate your patience with my ignorance, and hopefully 2012 will be a wonderful year, and I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas on the council, on the city, on the staff, and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Let, let me stop the council comments. Dr. Lilly, I, I forgot to ask you, you've been awfully patient, you've sat back there, you've weathered the storm, you're still here, strong man. Bring us up to date on what, what our school systems do.
Well, actually, given the late hour, I will truncate my usual update with the exception of a few brief comments. Of course, we're just recently back from Thanksgiving break, and it seems like a good time to thank city council members for the support that you show to our school system just tonight. I, I want to thank you for supporting the emergency ordinance to regulate the synthetic drugs. You folks do a lot to support our facility upgrades, the house for our Chinese program, and certainly appreciate the cooperation and help of all the wonderful folks in the city department. So, just thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Dr. Lilly. All right, I'm sorry, back to counsel please with your comments. Who's next?
I just have two things, just to remind folks of Journeys Inn, which is on the 13th at 6:30, and the rain or snow date is on the 15th. And I would just note that Jerry Goodpasture and other folks were instrumental in getting this started. I forget how many times we've done this, quite a few, like 10?
What time is that, Margaret?
Or 11, 6:30. And in the past, it's conflicted with our work session frequently, so in this time it does not. Anyway, as most people know, Jerry's been under the weather, so it's an opportunity to support Journeys Inn and Jerry's project that she has, has nurtured and helped to grow over the years. Also, I would note, I've said before that there's more homelessness in our community, particularly with our children and families. Our school systems are being stretched with trying to figure out how to, how to help children and families. I would encourage, encourage all of us and others to help when we can, and I serve with Gary on the United Way board and would put a plug in United Way, serve some of the agencies that do help families. They're also instrumental in forming Family Promise of Bristol to help with transitional housing by churches, housing folks while they go through programs to achieve financial stability and independent housing. So, I would encourage everyone, I know Belva worked real hard with our citywide campaign with our employees, and we really appreciate that, and hopefully United Way will make its goal, but its goal is about what it was last year, and we're seeing the need at about 30% greater from most of our, most of the agencies that work with United Way. And not everybody who serves, who serves folks are United Way agencies either, so it's, it's tough times, so appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
That's it? Who else? Joel? Michelle? Let me, a couple of things. Let me talk about something that's a saddest thing first. While this council meeting was going on tonight, there was a funeral service for Officer Danny Farmer, one of our police officers for many years, only 53 years old, lost his very short battle to cancer on Sunday. The service was tonight while this council meeting was going on. I'm sure Blaine, I, I know you and Bob were there, and I'm sure y'all'd like to have been there for the service. I appreciate you being here. Danny was an exemplary police officer, just, just a wonderful citizen of our community. Leaves, leaves behind his wife Sheila, his sons Brandon and Benji. Just taken from us way too soon. Just a fine man in every way, active in, in children's sports in the community, a religious man, active in his church, a fine, a fine man, a fine individual who, who will be dearly missed by our city, our city staff, and everybody in the community who knew him. So, our thoughts and prayers are with, with the Farmer family. With that said, a couple of things. Saturday, city council on the Tennessee side is going to be ringing the bell at Walmart and senior staff. I, I think Mr. Sparks and Bob up there, some other folks are ringing the bell with us. We've got Bristol, Virginia, first time doing it on the Virginia side of town. Glad, glad to have them joining us in this effort. Wonderful cause every year, ringing the bell at, at, for the Salvation Army. Our December work session's coming up in a, in a couple of weeks. That's the opportunity every year for council members to sit down after coming back from National League of Cities, picking up ideas, looking at things we want to work on. It's a great brainstorming session where we throw out ideas and, and, you know, sometimes, I, I always throw out a lot of gee whiz projects that, you know, gee whiz, wouldn't it be great if we could do this? And, and sometimes those get accomplished. We, it's, it's a great time for us to, to dream big and, and help direct staff to, who, while we dream, they're the ones that actually have to, you know, do the work, put the boots on the ground, and they accomplish a lot. With that said, I'm going to call on our, our house band, a band simply known as Christmas Tie, to, to take us on out of here, and I want to quote from "A Night Before Christmas" and say simply, Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night. We are adjourned.